All right. We're going to open the Selectments Meeting of May 28th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have meeting minutes for several, one, two, three, four, five meetings and one executive session.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have our annual reappointments. You see, besides the discussion of the IAC and the earthworks, is there anything that sticks out, Mary, that we need to take care of right away?
As you wish. Not that I know of.
Okay. All right. So the Insurance Advisory Committee, since the school is regionalizing and the drop dead date is for regionalization, is it November?
That's the election. But the regionalization is technically July 1, is it not?
You know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, their budget is fiscal year '20. It's separate from town, so they're regionalizing as of July 1.
Well, I was wondering whether there was an emergency to changing that person, but I guess there is, if it's July 1.
Right.
Okay. And is there any suggestions from the board as to who could take the appointment place of the Burl Memorial Teacher?
What are the other, what is the makeup of the?
It's supposed to be representatives from each union, so at the moment that would leave only the Patrolman's Union, who's David Goulding. And then there'd been a thought that there'd be an elected person, which was Eloise, but there'd also be a retiree, which is not represented, and there's an employee, Bob Hodge. Linda Chacola was the teacher's union representative, but that would be regionalized now. I'm trying to think who else is on there.
Maybe we look for a retiree?
Well, I was gonna say somebody from fire also.
They're not unionized.
I know they're not unionized, but they still get insurance, right? This is the Insurance Advisory Committee that helps decide.
Well, I mean, it could be, yeah, it could be that or it could be anyone.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's a, that's a large group, even if they're not unionized.
Right. Well, that's a possibility. Peggy, you have any suggestions?
No, I was trying to think as we were going through. No one's coming to spring into mind.
But if you're looking at like groups, you have the employee group up here, you have fire, you have police.
Yeah.
You have highway.
What do you think? Do you think that someone from fire might be interested in being on that committee?
I can put it out there. Can't promise you anything.
Well, then we can at least say we tried.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, what, could you do that?
Since their benefits, so.
Yeah.
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 All right. And if that doesn't pan out, then we can just put it out there, or if we happen to think of somebody?
Okay.
We will. All right. And the earthworks advisory, we lost the building inspector, and it's been suggested that Bob Wheeler become a regular member. And maybe perhaps the building inspector as of July 1 could be a consultant or could be a member.
Yeah, I think we definitely want to go forward with the building inspector on that committee. They are probably the most knowledgeable individual about that topic.
Yeah, well, and that was the feedback I was getting was that even if that person isn't on the committee, they need to be consulted. But are you okay with that, Peg?
Uh huh, absolutely.
Okay. So why don't we consider that then, the building inspector?
Putting him on the committee and Robert Wheeler?
Uh...
Robert Wheeler was gonna take the vacancy created by...
Was there, was there a number, a specific number that we needed, or does it matter?
Maybe it doesn't matter.
I think, did we have three?
No, Lynn Sally, Joe Atchew.
Mike.
Mike Sawyer, Paul McKilk.
Steve Baird.
Steve Baird from Conns Con.
So five, then.
So if you put another one, it'd be six. That not, I don't know if that matters, but...
I think we could probably, since there's still four, we could probably wait for the building inspector.
We could wait on the building inspector and just put Bob on?
Well, just, I mean, there's four left.
Right.
Right.
It's not like it can't function with four.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're gonna, we're gonna put that one on the back burner right now, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Uh, let's see. And do we want to vote the appointments that we have, the people that have agreed, or do you wanna wait?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Jim, do you wanna just come up?
Sure.
Yeah. So the one, your next thing might take a few minutes.
This isn't too deep tonight.
Okay.
No.
Someone take too long.
I like the new patches.
What's that?
I like the new patches.
Yeah, I just haven't had them put out yet, but nice. So since, I think April 22nd was the last time I was here. So since then, since then, we were looking at, well, I'll give you the total of call volume, because that's where I like to start. Call volume for this, as of yesterday, is 259 for the department. Put that into context, last year, we were at 256 on the same date, so we're up three calls in one year, which really is statistically meaningless, except if you factor in no brush fire season, which is, which means that we're up because of, because of the lack of brush runs that we typically do a year chasing runaway fires.
Chasing fire?
Yeah. So I'd say we're up, or on calls.
So how many brush fires would you normally get?
Depends on, it depends altogether on the weather. Depends if there's no rain, so, but you could, it's hard to say.
And people can burn when it's raining?
Can, yeah.
But it's kinda hard?
It's hard to give us business rate.
Yeah.
Right. But as far as motor vehicle accidents or collisions, as they're called now, plentiful in Berlin. That's pretty much...
You don't discriminate.
Fifty percent of our call volume lately in the past, since I last saw you, the board has been MBAs and medicals. The MBAs are occurring all over town, not just, we used to have one favorite intersection down on Gates and Marlborough, which I believe that the police mitigation, the guard rail and the light has done super down there to stop that, not going away from happening. But as far as the accidents, Five Corners, Central, Pleasant, 495, all over the town. To me, I'm not, I can't, I would just say it's volume, you know, that's causing it different times of the day. When I was up here last week, I went to a car fire up on 495, not related to that, but it turned, just for the history, it turned out to be hardwood floor guy with a load of polyurethane in his floor sanders in there, so it really was kinda a brilliant fire. The traffic, I don't know if the board's had any issues with the traffic from 495 backing up from 290 into town. If anyone's brought that to the attention of the board, that causes volume on Pleasant Street through town. When the 290s backs up, GPS seems to be directing them through town.
Ah.
So it's, it's creating this sort of different traffic pattern through Berlin.
Yeah.
Which, which could, to me, to me, what I see is it causes issues with trying to turn on the south from South Berlin and possible, you know, just a whole different change in traffic patterns in town.
Yeah, 'cause I had given Tom possible things to look at for the traffic study, and that was one of them.
Yeah.
Pleasant, oh, south, oh, friends at Gates Pond who can't get out unless you go mad over four lane to traffic. And then, yeah, the five corners, so that's what Boyleston, Ball Hill, Derby, right there.
Right.
Okay.
But that one on Pleasant seems to be the most severe. I don't know if Tom, Tom led into that, but something to look at. Let's see what else. Staffing wise, the department is, we're stable right now. We don't have excessive help, so we're making do with what we have. Really, really cutting it tight with trying to keep everything from running overtime, using the day guys too much. The day guys tend to fill in the gaps with night if we're running short on help at night, but that's what I'm seeing. Summer could be a little dicey for help. The fault, the failsafe is to open it up to an all call if we don't get a response. I'm working with Personnel Committee to give me some guidance on staffing a per day at midnight, or maybe splitting the value that we got, the budgeted amount we got to maybe two. We're trying a couple of new things for night, working, working with the extra money that Chief C. put into the budget for that position. Let's see. Old business. As far as the folks that are in, in class, I think we have three in EMT class right now. One's testing, three going into the academy. Public interaction, we're at a Memorial Day Parade, the cert members did the water distribution, and they'll be, they'll be down at the Memorial School on June 6 for Field Day. And the last thing I just wanted to talk, I had, we're talking staffing, 'cause that seems to be my biggest concern going forward for the town. I did, ironically, I got an article today from the volunteer call Fire Association in Massachusetts, puts, puts a very tiny magazine in, but I just wanted to leave this ladies to read later. I don't know why somebody who was type couldn't spell significant, but...
And it's really big.
Yeah, it's really big. But a couple of things on there are the age of the, the age of the members are going up considerably. There's 53%, I think they said, are over the age of 50.
Wow.
And in the, how long you're staying in service has gone down quite a bit, too. But if you look at the stats in this column, on the left-hand column, if you look at 1983, it looks like 75% of firefighters in the country were volunteer. If you go to 17, it's, it looks like it's 50%. So, and, and this is, this is something to, I think all public safety is trying to deal with going forward is where are we gonna get our help and who's gonna actually, you know, except for possibly military service folks, who's actually gonna be our next firefighters?
Yeah.
With a difference. Just something to think about. What about you? And I think that's it. Any questions?
And do they, have you done any, reach out to people?
We do, we do, we do the EMS class, we do, we generally like to get EMTs first and get them with, with the people that are in class, try to get them to see if anyone looks like they may be firefighter material, and then I'll reach out, talk to them, try to get them, and usually they come in, usually there's somewhat of a demand, you know, and, but it hasn't, we haven't been getting, seeing that. Another thing is too, is it just that the amount of time involved in being a firefighter EMT is, you know, I think it's, it's six months at least to be an EMT, and then it's, it's a good six months before you're really comfortable doing it. And then the firefighter's a whole other, whole other deal.
Yeah.
They fire academies. When you find a class, if it's in Stowe, you're lucky. Maybe once a year they can get a class in Stowe if they can get in. It's a good five to six months to get through that given, doing that primarily. And then to do the skill set after that, to get out and learn it, you know, your couple of years. So when you think about, if you look at, if you read that article and look at how long people stay in the service, after five years, it drops off considerably. And when you think that would be just about the time when someone would be actually learning, get the job down, they're taking a leave in.
Right.
So sustaining them in the, there's a lot to consider. Labor is my biggest concern.
So does it matter, like, small town, big town, city?
Small town worse than big. I think big town, you know, they're, you're seeing in small towns, less people coming out for fire service, and we're competing with a market that pays full-time.
A lot, yep.
So we make, we often train and then hand them over to the cities, yeah. So it's all, it's all sort of, but it's something to think about going down the road, how we'll, how we'll actually have people to do the job.
Have, I think Chief C. talked about some PR or something at Tohato or Assetment?
Yeah, Assetment.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do it at Assetment, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to see where the kids are interested.
It is, it's true. It's the cost of living here, too, as it goes up. It pushes here, candidates out, too.
Yeah.
So, anyway, any questions?
We typically wanna hire fire and EMT where they have both, right? That's what we're looking for?
That's, that's the best, but usually I'd say an EMT, if you can get an EMT first, that's, that's a main.
I'm just wondering if we maybe need to change how we're looking at that.
Yeah, we need the EMTs the most, and then if they're firefighters, too, that's a bonus.
Any opportunity to do like a, not gonna use the word, begins with an R, with other towns, just like a collaboration?
But, but the other towns are having the same issue, so that, I've talked about...
You steal from one, you steal from the other.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Good.
So, we'll work on that, we'll work on brainstorm and, you know, some approach. I think all public safety is seeing and feeling a pinch from that.
Any chance of the R-word ever resurrecting again?
Maybe.
I didn't say it. I didn't say it, just, all right.
Yeah.
There's, when is the next opportunities, volunteer opportunities at 19 Carter? Would that be something maybe?
I'll spread the word out.
I mean, he could. It's on a Saturday, it might be better this time, but we got no people last time.
Okay.
Well, I'm sorry.
Well, it feels better trying.
J.T. and his wife showed up, so...
Okay.
That was awesome.
I think some of the other vol, some of the other people sitting at the tables volunteered at other tables.
It was more of a networking sort of thing than actual volunteers showing up, sort of thing.
It was, yeah. I think the internet's probably where you start, you know, the internet, and that's where we start.
That's where you're gonna find the kids.
That's exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
But even with that, like, I was an EMT when I was 16, but that was because my aunt ran the program, and the training is so much harder now to get certified than it was then, that it would be very difficult for a teenager to do that.
It used to be like this thin manual in the 80s versus like a book now. Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. All right. Well, if there's any way we can help, let us know.
No, that's just, just wanted to pass that on.
All right.
Some electrical constraints.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you need copy of this, Mary, and I can?
Yeah, if you wanna leave it in there, and I can scan it and send it to you.
Okay. I'll leave it right here.
Thank you.
All right. How is the Town Space Storage Subcommittee doing? Do you wanna come up and talk to us, or?
Nothing would make us happier.
I know. Wow.
It's got me on softball field, so.
There you go. Are you hiding?
I thought you were stealing your red one.
Red one, black. I got my matching hat and everything.
Do you just sleep at the softball field?
Um, I really almost didn't sleep this weekend. It was, we were at the field, leaving the house before 6:00 AM every day this weekend for a tournament.
Looks like you got a little sun.
Little bit.
Both of ya.
Yep. Practice today, game tomorrow, game Thursday.
Weather permitting?
Yeah, we gotta get it in, 'cause playoffs start this weekend for the rec league. And I think a scrimmage with the tournament team on Saturday, playoff Sunday. Other than that, no, no softball.
For old home day, why don't you have a game, you versus Fire EMS?
Wow.
I think the camera didn't pick it up. Yep, it's all good. Moving on.
So, anyway, building space, I think this is gonna turn into a much bigger endeavor than we ever thought when we volunteered. Yeah, I think, looking at the history, they did a good job 20 years ago preparing this building for 20 years. And now we're, as you can see, with broken tile and subfloor and heating issues and everything we're going through, that it's really start to do a larger plan for the next 20 years. I think we're fortunate, Richard Smith has some architectural background, I'm not sure he's gonna continue, but he's been doing a lot to look at, going on his own to look at space in town and to photograph it so that we can do a, really an in-depth survey with all the departments and boards with pictures of available space. But that doesn't fix the short-term need for space for the town administrator. So we brainstormed a couple of options. Obviously, there's an office here that may or may not be ideal. I think part of this discussion is gonna have to involve Margaret and the type of space she's looking for. I don't know if this is gonna work for her with the way she kinda talked and wants to be involved. We've had some discussions, and June's not here, but I guess I gotta be careful with June.
June Junior, be careful back there.
With a lot of concerns that she's had for a long time. And, you know, one of the things, there's a lot of what they do is interim, meaning with the departments and not necessarily the public, yet they're front and center. So, and you know, 'cause we all end up there. There ends up being a lot of disruption to their day. So one of the things that we did discuss with, with them was the possibility of a short-term kind of fixed move that the small meeting room in 221 could be, for a short-term time, could be the accounts office. And then that leaves either this room or the current accounts office for the TA, for Margaret.
Well, still getting them out of traffic.
Well, and gets June out of traffic for a while, and keeps the TA, you know, and gives a couple of options. You know, we've also started to look at utilizing other space to free up space here, because now we lose a meeting room. Now, the town invested significantly into the 1870 Town Hall. That's one thing that should be explored, and George was exploring with the Council on Aging, if that's a potential space for them. And then you start to look at the Veterans Agent, services sometimes a similar population, maybe they can work together.
Right.
Then we take a building that we're, we're heating, we're, you know, we've done all this work to, and it gets utilized every day. Makes maybe a little bit more, more sense to start to do. But again, that's all unfortunate for us, day to day, you know, for us to try and meet has been difficult, because we're so busy with everything else we're trying to handle. And Richard's been easy and, has been difficult as well, and George, so for us to have regular meetings has been tough, especially since we don't have a fully filled-out committee. So I don't know where we're gonna stand, 'cause I don't know where Richard stands. He mentioned the other day to me that he may not be able to continue, so that's gonna make things a little bit more difficult. But I think as Margaret comes in, not that we wanna throw anything on her plate, but it would be good for us to have some preliminary discussions with her, because I think a lot of this is gonna kinda be how she wants to build, you know, she talked a lot about building a team, how she wants the team involved and around, you know, and that could be how this building is set up. You know, I think we really need to do, and we've talked about it, a good job of preparing us for the next 20 years, and that doesn't, not necessarily in space at all, but roof, heating, and HVAC, and all the issues we've had, all, you know, this is probably gonna be a much bigger project than just, just outlining the space needs of each group.
Instead of moving people around, we might have to think...
Right. Yeah, we have a lot of big spaces that might be divided into, you know, but that's gonna take some engineering, that's, we have to look at the HVA systems, the sprinkler systems, and can that all handle it?
Mm-hmm.
So, did I miss stuff?
Oh, nice job.
So I think that's where we stand now. You know, we'll, we'll continue to try and plug away a little bit and, and see where we get. But I think we have some options. I think maybe a preliminary discussion with Margaret as things move forward with that would be good. And then, you know, we've talked with June, she picked out a pink color, so...
She's ready to go.
Well, just wait to see if she's gonna be there.
To help her, so...
Well, either way, she should probably move down there, no matter what.
Yeah, it's probably not the ideal space long-term for her at all, but it...
Which one is this, is that where the recreation meets?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So if you went with option one and two of the accountant down the hall and Margaret in there, what are you looking at for time to move, reconfigure, anything, Margaret?
It's, it's once we know...
Couple of weeks.
You're not even, I mean, it'd be a day or two to paint it or whatever.
June goes out with the paint color, we have a problem.
The year-end's coming.
I know, we talked about it, we could, we'll work around you guys, that we can get enough people to help to get the furniture down there and the file cabinets reorganized.
You could almost like do that after things close, potentially, get a bunch of people moving down.
Yeah, it could be...
Be ready to go the next morning.
Right.
But there's no computer hookups or that sort of thing.
There's already drops in there and everything, so...
Year-end goes to mid-July.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Yeah. But no, we could do it at night, after June's gone for the day, and she comes in in the morning, and you have to reorganize all your stuff.
She's gone now, she's on vacation.
Yeah, again, I'm not gonna point that out, but...
Change the key. Yeah. You walk a very fine line there, Chief.
That was, that was my response.
After 30-some years, she has vacation.
She has rights.
She sent an email, "Yep, I'll be on vacation." That was my only response, again.
Yeah, so how do you see this group? Do you wanna, you're gonna continue and, and need help?
Continue with it.
Maybe some direction.
You just may need, you may need Margaret to drive it.
Yeah, and that's why it's gonna take some time, 'cause she has a lot on her plate to begin with.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, Dave's already looking at repairing things and, you know, I mean, even goes as far as the parking lot, you know, and everything. It's just, it's much bigger, bigger picture.
Yeah.
Well, at least if you can take care of the immediate need of...
Short-term.
That way, and...
Right.
And nothing is pressing.
Yeah.
Have you done any, or had any thought about the buildings outside of this building?
So that's what Richard's been doing, getting photographs and kinda laying out. He actually wants to even go farther, and we were hoping to get some kids from Assetment to like measure stuff and really figure out what's in there, because we have to determine what buildings are viable, you know, what the town wants to continue to invest in, and then what, you know, of those that are viable, what is usable space? And if there's any money to be spent on those. And that's why the 1870, you know, looks pretty good, especially when you think of Council on Aging. Right now, we're making our seniors go into the basement to do their classes and do the different things we do. We just, a lot of that renovation, that building was for them, so let's, you know, let's celebrate it a little bit. That might be a good option. I know George started having some of those discussions, but also when you look at possibly hiring a new building manager for there, well, if we have people that are already there, maybe that wraps into some other position, and we, you know, we downsize one job and save some there, too.
Well, and I've had a couple of conversations with the Town Hall Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
And their original thoughts were that building was for the arts, and I said, "But," you know, there may be...
What else?
There may be other needs that we need, you know, as time goes on, as far as meeting spaces.
Meeting spaces, I know recreational spaces, and some of that ties in. I mean, you know, you could look at art programs, it could also tie in with recreation programs, and so much that can, can work together and to try and, you know, not everyone has to have a specialized space, but a lot of shared spaces.
Right, right. I mean, I think they have it booked pretty well.
Which is good.
Like every evening, I wanna say. So even having our coffee talks, is, do we wanna hear, you know, line dancing upstairs that night, or?
Right.
Or the quiet yoga? So, yeah. I know there's still a lot to still consider.
But like Council on Aging, they normally eat at four, so...
Right.
They're running out.[1693.74]
No, but it's the daily things that are going on there and, you know, like you said, yoga and the other types of things that they have going on. And even just the office, you know, the office is a closet in the basement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think the Veterans Agent, we haven't, no one has spoken to him yet, but it might be something that would be viable for the Veterans Agent.
There's a lot of options, yeah.
To be there.
Yeah.
And then give Margaret an option.
Right.
All right. Well, maybe we could have you back in another month or so?
Yeah. Definitely, especially after we sit with Margaret and talk.
Yeah.
Get a better idea of where we're going.
Yeah.
I was thinking, while we're sitting here, should we talk charging station?
Oh, sure, why don't we?
The.
Electric charging station grant acceptance.
Grant from National Grid.
It wasn't a grant acceptance per se, it was a.
Come on up, Tim, don't be shy.
Didn't get a chance to reach out to them. The one thing I want to find out from them is.
You need to look this?
No, I have to actually call them, how we get paid.
Yeah, they were a little light on details.
Well, yeah, because it says rebate. And that's, I just want to know, is it a rebate that we get a check? Or is it a rebate, oh, we just apply a bill credit? That makes it very difficult for us to spend money if it's something along those lines. So, I wouldn't want us to get tied into anything, any purchases without having that clarified.
So, do you want to give us an overview or?
Or you want to maybe start?
Focus on camera.
Yeah.
So, we were approached mid-April, Tom?
Yeah, it was very late in the process.
So, mid-April with a, it was phrased as a grant application. And the catch was that you had to have it done by the end of May. So, at the time, it was about 40 days from conception to on, well, not on air, but online. They received such a strong outpouring of interest that it took them almost two and a half weeks to even evaluate applications. So, Tom and I worked to put in an application and it was accepted. We had some back and forth with them and ultimately, we received a grant letter or a pre-approval letter as of the 22nd of May. That starts our 45-day clock. So, that puts us somewhere in the neighborhood of middle of July, we have to be done. The approval letter is broken into two pieces. First of which is for the charging station physical equipment itself. And the second half is for the labor and electric work that goes into that. And our assessment at this point is that we could, because both are under $10,000, that we would do it in two separate pieces, which would not require a full procurement. Because if we have to go through full procurement, we can't do it in 45 days. It's, I don't see that being feasible.
Yeah, we could do the purchase of the station, the purchase of the equipment individual, and then the labor contract individual. And a lot of the labor would be highway and then electrician.
So, the grant doesn't allow us to capitalize, like, we can't go over above what we have invoices for. So, any of the work that is done by our own people, I don't think we can necessarily be reimbursed for that. However, with that, that means we should pretty much get this at no cost to the town. There's three viable options that we've kind of put on the plate, kicking around just amongst ourselves. One is to open up an area basically right outside this window. That's probably the least desirable, but it is possible. The second one, which is, in my opinion, and I think the most probable and certainly the easiest to do, is on the side here with the mailboxes. There are two inline spaces and the mailbox is there. You have the sidewalk. The main power supply for this building is coming off of this pole and goes into a transformer box, like, right there. From the, it would be a Ballard-mounted charging station. From that point to the main electrical service is about, I estimate about 40 feet. It can be trenched and we wouldn't even have to break any cement. We just disturb some flower beds. So, that is by far, from my assessment, the easiest to do. There is a little bit of drawback on that, because the cars have to be tailed to head to tail. But with the, the charging station has 25-foot cords, it should be able to do something that we can easily get by. The third option, which we haven't really fleshed out nearly as much, would be more on the public safety side of the building, where there's a panel. But when we were talking today, Dave made a good point that we're probably still going to have to pull power from that box. And that just means we'd have to trench farther, cut across the main entrance in all likelihood, and then drop it there and disturb Sharon's newly planted. Newly planted.
Someone's going to tell her.
They'll tell her.
So, that's kind of where we're at.
Got it.
The most obvious choice, the easiest build, is on the side.
Yeah.
It's kind of a no-brainer, really. So, what happens next? We have, we kind of, I want to say randomly, we picked ChargePoint as the provider just because they're the biggest name that was given from the approved list we have. So, we have the equipment basically specked out. There is a list of, I think, five suggested vendors that National Grid has worked with. My guess is, given the timeframe, we would probably just go down that list and start calling them. And at that point, we would hand over a lot of the control and to that vendor once they were selected. So, again, from Dave's perspective, probably most of it would be pretty light, maybe some light earthwork to get the conduit in from there. Provided that that has capacity, which it's a pretty big box, I'm assuming they dropped enough power there. But that's going to be some of the electric assessment that would have to be done. So, again, just to summarize it, probably on the side of the building, probably by the mailboxes, probably for free.
Okay.
There, oh, wait, asterisk. One thing that was in that letter that I didn't know about yet is there's a subscription fee from ChargePoint. We don't know what that cost is yet, that'd be a five-year. But it's primarily to run the credit card that is required for the public to use it. So, we, that's one piece of information we don't have for you at this time.
I think it also, I think it ends up paying for itself as it's used.
Yes. That's kind of the goal, is to make this a revenue-making type of.
For me, it's like, I just go to ChargePoint to scan it. And then it charges me and that's it.
What you need to sign, or what's before you tonight, is an agreement of conditions. Essentially, what those conditions are, is that this station will be public. That it will be easily accessible for individuals. That it will be included on the various apps for finding charging stations. And that it's in a safe environment that's accessible for at least 12 hours a day. We meet all those, we have a lit parking lot, this is a public building. Police station's pretty safe. And, you know, we meet all the criteria as now. All we'd have to do is just submit into the various applications that use it. Again, the part of the benefit too is for our own purposes, because as our fleet grows with EVs or plug-in hybrids, that's an application that we have right there at this building that we can take advantage of too. I guess that's the gist.
There's no special advantages to the town as far as the public being able to use it?
Well, we could actually, through Charge, going through ChargePoint, we could actually make money.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, we.
Well, that's what I'm curious about.
End up setting our fees. And that's something that we'd have to, once we get to that point, we'd have to determine, are we trying to just offset costs or is it trying to be revenue?
So, for our purposes, so like if Tom charges, it would primarily come at the form of our own electricity, probably with a minor service fee for ChargePoint. Okay, so he would be getting the lowest probably available type of thing, because we'd be using our own electricity that we negotiated. The public would be able to access it at will. They'd have, you know, there'd be a credit card fee that would tack on there. But still, the whole point of this is to be competitive. The, why everybody's doing this is National Grid makes money through the sale of increased electricity. ChargePoint makes the service fee. And we, as a landlord, so to speak, can't really expect too much from it. But for our purposes, by going to EVs and plug-in hybrids, that's our advantage. So, that's why National Grid is being so generous with the grant. They're not being generous at all, they're securing their future business as transportation changes.
Allows us to continue to capitalize as a green community and further that initiative.
So, really, the only thing that's required there is just, it's basic information, name, municipality, signature of authority, title, and I believe we need W-9. Is that the right number, W-9 for tax form?
Oh, yeah, Amy's right behind you.
So, do you want to fill this out and you need a signature here?
Yeah, so if you sign, I can fill it all out.
All right, so, do I hear a motion for me to sign this?
Motion to sign.
Yep. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. You know, I'd be curious, I mean, you see them at malls and people just plug in and go into the mall for insert time here. What are you going to do here? You drive by and you drop your car off.
That, that happens. You'll definitely see that, especially now where the Tesla charging stations are in Highland Commons. But also, I mean, I use it, I go to a meeting somewhere for an hour.
Plug in.
And plug in and it's, you know, it's good. I mean, even the benefit of an hour charge on a charging station like that versus what I, when I plug into an outlet at my house. It's, you know, it's three or four times faster.
Yeah, even a 30-minute charge can give you 50, 60% of your charge. 100 miles easy.
And the technology is going crazy. The new EVs that are coming out are, the mileage is much longer.
It's unbelievable.
Options are much greater.
We didn't opt for a fast charger, which is like where you see on like the MastPike, those things. They take a lot of juice, that's pushing a lot of electrons. And it's unnecessary for this application. This is really going to be used for our purposes and topping up vehicles as they.
Well, that's next step too, you know, depending upon the demand.
Correct.
You know, people are going to be like, "Oh, I waited a couple of hours, need another one."
Yeah, they're just cruising through or something and they, you know, they need 50 miles or something.
Right, they're coming to visit a family member in town. And what ChargePoint actually allows you to do is you can reserve it.
Would it be within a certain timeframe of hours that the public could use it then?
Um, or?
I mean, the parking lots open all the time.
Parking lots open all the time.
Yes, I just didn't know if this would be available anytime?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Okay.
It's like I, whenever I go to a meeting at Mass Development, at Devon's.
Yeah.
They have a couple and I pull in. You know, I'm only there for an hour, but I recharge everything that I use to get it back.
Yeah.
So.
Do you?
I guess I will, yes.
Fill it out and then give that back to Mary so she can.
Fill it all out. I'll make a copy, I'll get a copy of the other paperwork from Amy tomorrow.
She stopped playing her game so she can answer you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
All right, we have a letter in support of H2837, an act to increase container recycling in the Commonwealth.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, thank you to the town of West Boylston for forking over their letter to help us with this, appreciate it.
Do you want to share with the public again what we're doing here?
So, all this is, it was, it came from this small article in the item, two Saturdays ago, where West Boylston had reached out to their senator and state representative about expressing the town's support for a NIP bottle refund bill. So, proposed five-cent deposit on NIP bottles, essentially a tax. If people didn't return the bottles, the money would go to the state shovel fund, where there's such a concern about the Fireball Bandit in town. As I said last week, it may not do anything today, it may not do anything tomorrow, but at least we're pushing forward to try and do something for that, so. And I had reached out to the West Boylston selectmen and the woman that I spoke with was more than happy to share information, which resulted in this. So, thank you to them.
Wow, thanks for bringing it forward. All right. Uh, we've got scheduling for our July and August selectmen's meeting. And, so we can pin it down? You have dates that were better?
Yeah, I don't care if we do it on Tuesdays, but the Mondays, July is crazy. We have birthdays, anniversaries, and they're all falling on the Mondays, because they're a week apart.
Right.
So, if you want to put those on Tuesdays, or if you want to wait until Margaret comes in to push that out so that she can attend, what easier?
What do we have for meetings in July right now?
Well, did Judy meet here?
Did we?
Well, so, well, June.
June is 10 and 20.
10, 24.
Nothing for July or August. So, if you went up two weeks from June, you'd end up on July 8th. Or you can move it to Tuesday, July 9th. And then the, two weeks from that, instead of the 22nd, you can move to Tuesday, the 23rd.
I have no problem with that.
So, do you want to just leave it as the 9th and the 20th then?
23rd.
The 23rd?
Yeah, sure.
All right.
And then we'll wait until Margaret gets here and maybe she needs something.
I can't post your dates for the coming year. Usually, the meetings are posted for the coming year, but.
All right, so let's just do the 9th and the 23rd and then?
August is the only gap. September, you'd come back after Labor Day and meet on Tuesday, the 3rd.
And then start going every week?
Yeah, and start going every week, but it's on Mondays.
August 5th and 19th are fine too.
August 5th and 19th are fine with me also.
You're okay on the Mondays in August?
Yeah, it's July. It's, every, every single event in our family is in July. Every birthday, our anniversary.
Okay.
And they're all a week apart, so all those Mondays this year, any other year, it would be fine too, just not this year.
Well.
All right.
My son-in-law's is July 23rd, but I don't think he'll mind.
All right, so we'll do July 9th, July 23rd, August 5th.
Yep.
And then the 19th.
Yeah.
And then we swing back into play every week. Well, the 3rd, it's a Tuesday, and then the 9th, just going, whizzing down the calendar and then moving around for holidays.
Right.
We can also assess at that point, because most towns with TAs do not meet every week. They meet every two weeks. And that may be enough time for Margaret to get rolling, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And then the other thing is, if we wanted to do another coffee talk.
You wanted to wait for your availability in June?
Pivotal surgery is on the 10th, so just that week is probably completely out.
Okay.
So, want to go like the Wednesday, the 19th? That gives you time, or time?
Yeah.
So, we're not pushing?
Or another, once again, going back to Margaret, that would be a good way to introduce her to us too. So, maybe wait until.
Well, she might actually.
Is she going to be here on the 19th?
She might act, well, she might be available to join us for that evening.
So, why don't we talk to her, see if she can make something like that? Otherwise, maybe put it off until mid-July.
Well, do you want to tentatively pick the 19th and we'll see if that works?
Yeah, tentatively pick, because then we can ask.
And see if she would like to join us?
Right, and then we can ask Leanne if there's, plus, we need to see what's going on at 1870, up and downstairs. Maybe we have to move over to 19 Carter.
Do you have a preference? Want to try the Town Hall first?
If we do the Town Hall, can we go upstairs? Because the last session was kind of squishy.
See if there's an evening where there's, then it might not be the 19th.
Yeah, because, yeah, there was always something upstairs. And then if we do go upstairs, I'm assuming that room is.
Hot.
Well, not so much hot, but that we would need to do like all the setup with chairs and things like that too. Where if we popped over to Carter, 19 Carter, it's kind of comfy and everything's already there.
Yeah. Well, we could check the availability on the 19th of the 1870, and if it's not available.
Reach out to Evie.
Plan out, plan on 19 Carter and also see if Margaret's available.
Six to eight, or do you want to do seven?
I think it was seven last time.
Seven.
Seven?
Seven, let folks get home.
Okay.
So, that was the 19th, correct?
Mm-hmm. Well, that'll work out, because we'll have our meeting on the 10th.
Yeah.
And then middle of the next week is the 19th and then swing right back into meeting. So, if there's anything falling out of that, we can address it a few days later. Okay.
All right.
Mary, do you want to reach out or I can reach out?
Oh, I.
I'll reach out. I'll send a note to Leanne for the 19th.
Okay. Executive recruitment updates. I have not heard anything about the Fire and EMS chief search.
We're about 11 days from the last update. They should have, or, so the 17th. We're about 11 days from the last update. They should have, or, since the 17th, I think they said they should have had the SAs back. So we're 11 days from that, so it seems like they should be moving us forward shortly here, right?
Right. We should be hearing from them, I would assume, or at least the screening committee.
I wonder if we could ask for weekly updates going forward because, I mean, we're getting to the...
Yeah, getting to July 1st.
And they've been silent and less prompted.
Okay, I can ask.
Steve?
Do you have...
Ellen gave me an update, because Brian gave him an update, so I can report to you an update that telephone interviews are this Friday. I believe, I guess he sent you an update about 10 days ago, and Liz has completed open source background checks. So background checks on the internet are done, and telephone interviews are this Friday.
Okay.
Mary, could you send that to the screening committee and Jim Kecannon?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just to summarize, I had a gal reach out to me asking when people speak in the meeting if we could just summarize because the camera doesn't swing, it doesn't pick it up, so just Steve from MRI giving us updates on next steps for the Fire Chief Search. And we'll get that out to the committee. Thank you.
All right, and the Town Administrator Search. We've accomplished choosing a candidate and we're currently working on negotiations for a contract. So I think, unless there's anything either one of you'd like to add. Okay. The next thing I put on the agenda was the Building Inspector vacancy. And I guess I was looking to find out from both of you. Since I had, I'd had a chance to talk with Richard last week. The office is running very smoothly. We've had no complaints. We've had, as a matter of fact, we've had compliments on how things are going. And Richard did mention to me several times that he appreciated the compliment of thank you from, especially you, Lisa, at the FinCom meeting in April. And I guess I'm looking to find out from you where we want to start, if we want to promote from within, do a search internally, or where, where you'd like to begin from here. It might be nice, because Richard, I believe, was only planning to work into June. And I know Margaret's not coming on until July. I mean, I personally believe that we should see whether we can make this employee permanent through some kind of an agreement. And I think he's sort of wondering where everything stands right now, too.
I think we have to do a search. I think you can't just, yeah, you have to put it out there. And my, my hope would be that we would be able to bring Margaret in this because I think she needs to be able to start building her team.
Do we know if Richard's interested? I mean, would he...
I believe he could be interested. I'm certainly, you know, he's worked in Townsend for 22, 23 years, I think. And he has filled in for us twice over the years, for Larry Brandt and then for Joe during medical leaves. He's enjoyed getting to know the people, he said, and Leanne is very pleased with how things are going right now. Very smooth, and she's a very organized person. So I believe Richard must be just as organized, or she would not have said that she's very happy how things are going right now.
Well, I mean, there's the usual list of questions, you know, will it be full-time? Because he hasn't been doing full-time, correct?
No.
So, is there a need for full-time? And obviously, if there is, you're gonna talk about salary, then you're gonna have to talk about the NRP person. Do we stick with them as half-time? Do we need them for full-time if that position's a full-time? Do we need them at all? What about the backups under Richard that we kind of put in place? The list of the work to be done, I mean, so there's a lot of questions that need to be flushed, flushed out. And I don't think that we can advertise it until we kind of know all this is going on.
Do you want me to ask your questions? Or do you want to ask him those questions? We could invite him?
I do fundamentally believe this is a full-time position. I think that he's doing exactly the bare minimum of what needs to be done right now.
Okay.
I do think it's a full-time position.
I'm guessing you're right, yeah.
And also, I think, wasn't he giving, farming the plans out to David Horn? So that's the NRP person right there.
Oh, is David the NRP person?
Well, it would be, I mean, it's, that, that was what that role was for, and I think he may be using that. I'm not entirely sure. You would have to ask him.
Okay.
But I do think, you know, that there's more work than what he's doing. He's getting exactly what needs to be done.
Okay.
With no...
And he, and he has been using Tommy Dorr?
Oh, his work, good.
Yep.
Okay.
I thought he may have been doing some of the work for NRP himself.
Richard?
Because he's been over there, I believe.
Yeah, they're up and running it, or they're...
Is this something that you want to...
I think it may have been a plan review that...
Yeah.
Dave's do plan reviews at night because he's only available at night.
Yeah.
So Dave does plan reviews.
Yeah, but he is doing a portion of that role.
And I'm not sure how many hours he's been putting in to keep us up to speed and, or keep us up to date. But he seems to be organized enough that he's, he certainly isn't doing, you know, more than 12 or 15 hours a week.
Richard?
Yeah. And of course, he would have decisions too as far as his position in Townsend and Templeton. But, you know, I wanted to bring this up to see where, how the board felt about it and, well, you know, not keep Richard, we need to fill him in on what the plan is.
I mean, yeah, as much as I would love just to...
Poofa?
Into that role, we can't.
You can do that.
Right, so, I mean, we need to...
Do the process.
Correct.
So do you want to post internally?
I think you have to go out.
No, I think you need to do the process, which is external.
Yep.
Okay.
Because I think we tried to do that with the tax collector.
We did.
And we got called out. We got called out on it. So let's, let's just not get called out on it and do it the right way.
Okay. I mean, there has been some precedent set by the Board of Health that did hire internally.
Let's just do it the right way so no one can come back and say, "You did or you didn't."
So then I would, I would suggest then that we need to talk about at least letting him know that we'd like him to continue for a while because this is a process if we're gonna, if we're gonna go out.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it might be a problem if, if he can't.
Yeah, and then we have to deal with the problem.
Figure out Plan B.
Okay.
Okay.
All righty.
So you'll talk to him and let us know next week?
Sure.
Two weeks? Email, one of those? Because we're not meeting for two weeks, correct? 10th. 10th is our next meeting, yes?
Yes.
Yes, so, two weeks. So if you could talk to him and then whizz around an email or something, just so that we know and making an agenda item.
Okay.
Sweet.
All righty. We talked about the charging station, so review and release of the executive session meeting minutes and...
I'm not gonna be here on the 10th.
You're not?
That's Piper's Surgery.
That's Piper's Surgery.
Oh. Why don't you speak up there, Tim?
Move that meeting?
Do we want to move it to...
Do that on Tuesday too, or...
We could do it on Tuesday?
Yeah, but if she's gonna...
Or you can do it on the 3rd, it's fine too.
Yeah, I mean, Lisa, she said in surgery on the 10th, I don't want, I don't want to be here on the 11th.
Why don't you move it to June 3 and cancel that week?
Yeah. So go June 3rd and then...
Okay. So that would be next Monday?
Yep.
Instead?
Okay. And then skills still, still skip two weeks and come back on the 24th? And if we have to get in, if we have to meet, something urgent pops up, do you want to skip three weeks?
I think we're gonna have to, maybe we'll have to talk about it on the 3rd.
Okay.
Okay.
See how, see what the agenda is looking like.
Oh, that's...
Looking like, maybe, maybe we want to go ahead and have a meeting if it's, there's too many things to do.
All right.
Steve is back there again.
Steve?
Hi, Steve.
Steve Rollins, MRI.
Yay, thank you!
I was listening ever so carefully to the discussion on the 3rd and the 10th, and the potential date to meet with the candidate, again, we've talked about meeting with the candidate again to nail down the contract. We were looking towards the 10th because the 3rd is out, and I was listening carefully to you talking about the 10th. And the 3rd is, is a date that you can't do, so is there another date that week that you can do?
The week of the 10th?
No, the week of the 3rd.
The week of the 3rd.
Oh, okay.
If it doesn't matter to you, and it doesn't matter to her, maybe you can pick another date that week and we can see if she can do that.
So 4, 5, 6, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I'm, so right now, I'm good on any of those evenings.
Fourth, 3rd, 5th is better for me.
Why don't we just do the 4th then? Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve MRI.
I'm not confirming the other end is okay on the 4th, but...
All right.
No, but you know what, we'll...
Do you want to give the 5th as a backup? Do you want to give him to, 4th is preferred and 5th as a backup? Is that better to have a backup date?
Yeah.
That's always better, thank you.
And the surgeon only does surgery on Mondays, so I had no choice.
Mm-hmm.
And even if he did it on another day, we'd move it around. I mean, it's family first, so.
7 here?
Yeah.
Steve, we thought we had a Margaret sighting at the parade yesterday. I was standing there and I turned around and I'm like, and I'm staring at the poor woman, and then I'm looking at her, and she's not knowing, so I walked up that way to one of the committee members. I'm like, "Is that Margaret?" So now there were two of us staring at the poor woman, so if it was her, please apologize, we're not stalking.
Can I leave that to the negotiations to take place? I'd rather not.
Okay, yeah. She has a doppelganger.
All right, so review and release of executive session minutes. I'm looking for a process. I have, with a little bit of help from Judy Boomen, looked through the executive session minutes. And at the very least, we may be able to just approve the ones that we agreed on that can be released. If, unless you'd like to take a look at the minutes yourselves.
Were we even here for these?
No, but they'll never be released if, if there's no process.
Right.
No, I'm just saying, I don't need to see them if I wasn't here.
Okay, well, I mean...
I have not to say about...
That doesn't mean you need to blanketly release them though, either.
Well, you guys looked at them and made sure that there was nothing that...
Right, Judy and I did.
Couldn't be released, right?
Yeah.
If we're comfortable with letting them go, since none of us were here, I'm in.
Okay, then we'll put that on next...
Oh, you're not voting it, you want it on next?
No, I think, no, I think we should just put it on next agenda.
Do you want to scan them all and send it to everybody, or not?
How many?
There's a lot.
50?
Oofa.
40? They're not long, but...
Yeah, just let, yeah, just let us look at them.
How long is it gonna take to scan them?
I'll just scan them. And I'll put a break page in between saying, "These were the yes chunk, these were the no chunk, and those were the questions you had to make."
You could actually just do the yes ones at this point.
Yeah, you just want the yes ones, okay.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
And then I can, I can relook at them again at some point if you want, or someone else can.
Then that's less than, that's even less.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm assuming you only gave me a stack that only went back so far, am I right?
I gave you whatever Peggy had kept in that folder.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe that, that is good, maybe we're...
I, I, I don't know, I could ask her.
Oh, no, 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 don't even ask, that's okay.
My foggy remembrance is that they've never really been released.
Right, well, maybe over the summer. Okay.
Wish you can help find them.
All right. Other, new business. Old business.
Did you read about the grant with Dennis about Tolman Farm?
That is during this week.
Oh, okay, cool.
I think it's Wednesday. Or no, Thursday? It's on my calendar.
The grant that Peter was talking about, is it okay if I set up a meeting with a couple people to talk about potential for what to do or try to apply for with that grant?
Which grant is this?
It's the rural, what is the?
Mass Works Infrastructure.
Infrastructure grant. And I want to get together like Dave Smith, maybe Tim Wheeler, Jim Kecannon, and a few folks. Because he's been talking to people and I think there's some, some question, confusion. I'd like to get a few people in the room to talk about the best direction maybe to go with that and bring it back and...
Okay, and bring it back to a meeting and let us know what's going on?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, and just remembered that I should tell you that the National Grid did finally cash my check for a dollar.
Oh, right.
For the streetlights.
Wow.
I'd already written it off the checkbook.
They replaced a pole recently. That's actually something we need to talk about at some point. Because they're informing me when these poles are being done, and I don't know if that's precisely what the process was in mind that...
Well, it used to be that we couldn't get them to replace any poles, so we should probably be pretty happy they're doing any.
So was it a pole with a light or just a pole?
Well, they're sending to my personal email a list of any pole...
I know we did not put you as the contact on that. I know we did not.
Every pole that they are considering doing is coming to me, and they're saying, "Well, is there a light on here?" So right now, I'm your single point of failure.
So I can tell you if there's a pole online and it doesn't have a light, but it definitely needs to be fixed because you can just stick your hand right under the pole?
Well, there's one at the railroad tracks that is leaning up against a tree right now that they haven't fixed, so. The grant's canceled, thanks.
You win on that one, okay.
Well, I know Judy had a thing about double poles and broken poles and didn't get, didn't get very far. All right, so I do, we do have need for a quick executive session?
On the, on the double poles, there actually is Mass General law that you can find after a certain situation to cover that.
Is there a double pole, is it a broken pole? On South and Jones?
It's fixed now.
Oh, is it fixed, that the truck flipped?
That's still broken.
It's still together, isn't it? It's like a broken pole with a piece of wood in between it.
No, no, I think it's been replaced, if it's the one, if it's the same one. Maybe a week or two, a couple of weeks.
You go home tonight, take a look.
They recently replaced P-31 at Crosby Road, and they have on the schedule 69-1 South Street and 67-1 Pleasant Street.
Did they replace, can you tell if they replaced the one on Jones?
The one who's giving the information on is Crosby Road.
I think it's Jones and South. That one, I'm sure it's been replaced.
I saw them last week on Crosby too.
Because I almost feel like I'm gonna run into it every time I come to the transfer station.
It's been hit the way it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, the truck's hit it multiple times because it kept swinging.
Yeah.
Cool, all right, are we coming back in to...
No, we're not.
Waseki, hi.
Keefi.
Stone Eye, okay.